We will call the meeting to order convening from closed session. I would ask the city attorney to report on that.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The city council is in closed session this evening on three items. The first is threats to public services or facilities, consultation with the police chief, second item was conference with real property negotiator regarding tent properties located in the Old Town area, and the last item was public employee appointment, public works director, and there's no reportable action from any of those items.
Thank you, city attorney. And we'll have the roll call, please. Councilmember Powers, here.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne, here. I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, and that will be followed by the flag salute by PAC 84, the Bears.
Color guards post colors. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the solid four distincts, one nation, indivisible, Lord King and just for all. Color guards dismiss.
City clerk will read the video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at It's also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
At this time, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? We have, okay. We have no presentations, so we will go to public comments.
Okay, under Government Code, Section 5495-4.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on agenda items during consideration of the items. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
Okay, Aggie Henshaw.
Good evening. Our name is Aggie Henshaw. I'm a member of the Galt district. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of seniors leaving Chobola Center on Monday through Friday. There is an ongoing problem with limited parking on Tuesdays and Wednesdays due to the flea market. The flea market utilizes all the spaces for parking in and around parks in that building. The north side of Chobola Center has a parking lot, and that also is taken by the flea market, leaving seniors no parking spaces close to the center. For some of our seniors, walking a half block is freely parked. There are seniors in their 90s and late 80s that are mobile, but some are not. Parks and red parks lot has 16 unmarked spaces available. The other parking spaces are designated parking. There are four handicaps, two for senior employees, four spaces for drivers wheel-to-wheel, plus two marked 30-minute parking. Of the 16 unmarked spaces, two to four are used by parks and red staff, leaving a total of 12 to 14 spaces left for seniors. However, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, these spaces are taken up by people that attend the flea market. This leaves seniors no parking. Daily attendance in wheel-to-wheel has increased in the past six months. Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays, attendance is usually 40 to 60 people. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, the daily attendance drops anywhere from 15 to 20 people, and is an average of 80 lunches per month. One solution would be to have reserved parking on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And I figured out how to do that with CAPS. Using CAPS, it wouldn't cost any money. They could hold spaces for seniors from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 using the parking lot north of Chobola Center, which is on Carolinas. They could come to be placed at the designated parking areas on Monday evenings and then removed at 11:30 Wednesday. CAPS could also police the parking area for parks and red parking lots. The parking lot north of Chobola Center would be an ideal spot for designated parking across the street. Seniors could show their cards or their IDs, their driver's license to CAPS. CAPS could have a list that would only include two pages. They could check that name off, and that problem could be solved. And so there are approximately 24 seniors each to be held on their card. We only have four handicap marked spaces. That means their parking on the north side of the center would be a big plus for seniors. Thanks for allowing me to bring this problem to your attention.
Thank you, Aggie.
Thank you, Aggie. Thank you.
Carrie Ann Holmes.
Good evening. I am Carrie Ann Holmes. I am the Mills But Mills coordinator. I've been doing my job about 17 months, approximately. One of my primary responsibilities, I was told when I took the position, is by Mills But Mills, which would increase the numbers. The numbers had initially been 50, 60, or 40. When I took over, I had some days of 25 people. In September, I had clients up to 60, and I was proud and feeling very happy. I had gone in conjunction with South County Services, door-to-door, senior apartments, the senior mobile home complexes, the flea market, on my own time, the flyers that I had made to increase my population. The problem is, when the seniors come, there's no parking. I have seniors in walkers, chains, wheelchairs, something they barely walk in, don't have DME to get the medical equipment to even do that. I have seniors even in my handicap spots. They can't walk from the handicap spot up to the door. So quite often, they take the four designated spots, my Mills But Mills drivers, which are needed. I do not want this taken away. I'm a strong advocate for my seniors, I'm getting their numbers up, and I have daily complaints. Carrie, I drove around for a lot. I can't park them. Commonly, Tuesdays, Thursdays, but quite often, it is other dates of the week. We have our parking here. People park up and down the street or whatever. I don't have spots available for my seniors. The parking lot would be ideal. They can come through the lunch bowl and door. There is more parking spots. I'm a huge proponent, there's approximately 6% of us parking our employees. I was the first one to say, we should all park on the street or in the parking lot next door. Where you're going, we can walk. My seniors should be parked now. I had one senior that's 92 years old, and she came in and said, "Missed you, honey. Where did you get this last day?" She goes, "I drove around for 30 minutes, and I couldn't find it." This senior, her meal, only meal, is the meal I serve her. I do my best to give her sex. I know my seniors that when they come, certain ones, because their income under $500, this is their only meal. And when they stay on this two days, they've been eating for two days, and I feel guilty. I feel very guilty that there isn't a spot for my seniors. I was told, bring the numbers up, that's where they park. They've been offered South County services. Sometimes they qualify if they drive. I told them, I searched through Mary Lou's, that they don't qualify. I give them a carpool. They sometimes say, "Lay for bingo," or "They have us do doc squimmin." But I feel guilty if they don't have a place to start. I have my numbers up. The staff, the authority, 42 people today, 25 showed up. It's a parking issue. And I really hope the city takes this seriously, because I do, I think, as hard as I need today, I need yesterday.
Your time's up.
And thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Can we look into that? I think it's really important, and I'm, you know, they need places to park that's close by where the food is.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of any.
Yeah, me too.
We'll sort into different options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hold the speaker sheet. We will go to the consent calendar. Is there any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Because we have those red firsts.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, can we get those red firsts?
Okay.
To the record.
Okay, we have five items tonight. The first one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of January 17, 2012, and the special meetings of January 24, 2012. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, crack dealer purchase. Number four, public works agreement with Coastline Civil Engineering Amendment Number Two. And number five, award of Walker Community Park bleachers project to Sirocco and Sons.
Are there any questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to accept. Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is a scheduled matters public hearing for utility service rates 2012.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm trying out a new microphone. I guess it's working okay.
It'll be better once.
And will this come on by itself, or do I need to do something here, too? I'm sorry. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and.
Wait for the countdown first.
Is it, is it ready to go?
Yeah, it's up here.
It's counting down.
Oh, it's still doing it. Okay, thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
It'll take a minute.
I did hand out copies of the presentation for you, and there are several out in the audience in the boxes as well. I wanted to kind of go over a few things, but I'm going to start by telling you what we're really talking about, and that is the overall utility rate adjustments that the city makes annually. We're looking at a few slight increases and one large decrease for a net decrease of 81 cents a month for those residents in the Tier 2 Stormdrain area and about a dollar for everybody else. And of course, the commercial rates for other uses are proportional to that. So that's kind of where we're headed with this. I did want to go through a few things to give you the background on that. And presentation, I'm going to go through it quickly, just some general issues, and then go before utilities. And then I want to go through the recap of what we had in the public meeting that we held a couple of weeks ago. So you hear what the comments were for those who couldn't be here tonight, and then time to take your impressions and discussion and whatever action you want to do. So you've heard about this before, you know, to run a utility, you've got all the cost things that any business has, and I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I wanted to point out a couple of things, particularly in the wastewater side. When you look at them and look at rates, you think, oh, but you really, to understand that, you have to know what's going on with the utility. And Galt has some unique factors that I wanted to point out. Probably the most significant on the wastewater side is that all the wastewater in town is pumped to the treatment plant probably twice, in some cases, three and four times. That is a significant cost that a lot of cities have. So those are the kind of things that you really look at when you're going into evaluating your rates, and particularly when you're comparing rates to other agencies. Of course, the other things, the debt service is going to vary from agency to agency, depending on what they have to do, have done in the past, and everybody needs to look at what they have in the way of maintaining and establishing your reserves. The goals for doing rates are really pretty simple for utilities and in the city. Those utility funds need to be self-sustaining. They don't get support from the general fund. In fact, they pay the general fund for the cost of providing finance services, building maintenance, all of the kind of things that, again, any business would have as part of their operations. The, another issue with rates is to make sure you're charging the different users in an equitable manner, and that is established through a periodic analysis of your rate structure. What is the relationship between what a single-family home pays and what a commercial establishment pays? We didn't get into that in this round of rate adjustments. We've done what the city's done in the past for several years, is look at an inflationary cost increase, and periodically, five, six years or so, you do this kind of an analysis. And I think the last one was done here in 2008. And again, the difference in service demand and charge accordingly. Those are how you accomplish this goal, if you want to call it that. Another goal I always been, been taught, is you look at trying to avoid large fluctuations. Nobody likes to see a huge increase in any rate structure. It doesn't make the public happy, which means if you aren't happy, you know, I'm not happy, and so we try to avoid that. And how you do that is you maintain your reserves, so you can carry yourself through times when you've got a big project to deal with, or revenue dips for whatever reason, you can live through that. Or you have unforeseen circumstance that comes up. And I'll talk more about reserves in a minute. The way to help avoid that is you keep tweaking a little bit every year, so you don't get too far behind and go 10, 12 years without adjusting your rates, and then find out, geez, we've really got to raise on the whole bunch to catch up. Bottom line is to keep rates as low as possible, consistent with all existing goals, and that's what we're trying to do. So I mentioned this annual inflationary adjustment. The city has adopted a practice in the last several years of using the Consumer Price Index, which is, again, a measure of the cost of urban consumers. And I'm going to come back to that point also, based on one of the comments we had at the public meeting. So we started that a while back. We use the Western Urban Regional Area CPI. There are several consumer price indexes out there, and the city has adopted this one. And it is important to stay consistent with the one you've, that you keep bouncing around, and it's not, you're not going to have a consistent, you know, adjustments. Last year, that, oh, I should point out that that does have to keep up operating costs, but it doesn't always account for your capital needs. Because, again, capital projects tend to come in big lumps, and so you plan for that with a longer range view, and I'll show you an example of that in a minute. Last year, the CPI change was 3.4%, and that's what we're recommending for two of the utilities. The rate notification that was done as part of the 218 process includes that we would do future adjustments based on the CPI in the absence of any better information. The bottom line is, according to state law, is that you can't charge more than the cost of service. And that gets back to that periodic, you know, evaluation you do of rates to make sure you are charging a pro of the service. What this would do is allow you to go ahead and do the CPI for up to five years without doing a formal rate study and without doing a full 218 notice. You still have to provide public notification of changing the rates. We don't need to do the full 218 majority protest process, which would save the city a fair amount of money in avoiding that extra step. So let's jump into storm drainage. This is a pretty straightforward issue. You have a two-tiered rate structure that's been in place for many years, and new development is in the Tier 2. The older part of town is in Tier 1. Tier 1 needs to be adjusted with the vote of the people because it's the way that the law works on that. And when people join Tier 2, new development joins Tier 2, they agree as part of the process that we can use a CPI increase going forward. So that's what we're recommending for Tier 2. In water, there's really no significant changes, and I want to underline the word significant changes in what we've seen in the last year. So we are also recommending that we use the CPI adjustment for this coming year. But I do want to point out, there are some long-term concerns about arsenic and water meters that, I know you've adopted the Phase 1 program for getting the water meter, and I'll come back to that also in a minute, but the landfill and the rest of the water meters that need to go in by 2026, whatever it is, and arsenic treatment. I know we've started to work on the arsenic, but we're not done with that yet, and that could be a trigger that leads to having to do larger than a CPI increase, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. On waste, it's a little more involved this year. There was an issue with the green waste disposal, that the long-term place that was being hauled to close their operation, and the city worked with the franchisee California Waste Recovery Systems to, on to Malterns, as you've been aware of that. There was a cost associated with all that, and the company has agreed to face that out over the next three years, but again, there is a cost associated with that, and that is reflected in the adjustment down below that I'll go through. The franchisee that you have with Cal Waste doesn't use the Consumer Price Index. It uses a series of indices based on certain components of their costs. I have to tell you that when I met with them to talk about this, I asked them if they could have found a more complicated formula to do this, and they said, well, it came from the city's consultant, so I had to comply. But, and the issue will come back up in response to one of the comments we had at the public meeting. But overall, we're talking about a 5% increase. A big piece of that was about a percent worth of the green waste disposal. The other component is the landfill cost that is taken to the North County landfill, and they have an automatic increase every year based on the, a different index. So that is just cranked in automatically, and our franchise agreement reflects that, and basically, that share is cranked in. The larger component is just overall operating costs. So again, as I mentioned, 5.19%, about $1.20 a month, well, $1.20 a month for a single-family home. Wastewater, this is where we had all the fun. Staff is recommending that we combine the two charges you currently have in place. You have an operations and maintenance charge, or the basic service charge that you've had for many years, and then several years ago, you added a separate line item on the bill for the treatment plant upgrade costs. And that was implemented, I'm sorry to recall what year it was, but it did go back several years, and it's, that number's kind of bounced around because the project overall did come in less than what we had counted on. But we are suggesting that we no longer maintain that separate charge. And the reasons are that, you know, regulatory requirements aren't static. Wastewater permits for discharge are issued on a five-year cycle. Because of the time it takes to actually get a permit, it may go a little bit longer, five, six years, maybe even seven, but still, and they change all the time. And they really go less burdensome. There's always new relation. Part of the permit process is that you have to do certain studies. The results of those studies are considered in the permit renewal, and they could often result in another discharge requirement. Right now, we have in our new permit, a nitrogen and arsenic limit that still is going to require about $6 million in the next few years, and that has to be done, and I mean, done, completed optimal by 2015, so we don't have a whole lot of time to get that done. As I mentioned, upgrades are, you know, they're always a work in progress. The regional board finds a lot of things that they want considered, they want evaluated, and they can wind up in additional improvement costs, or operating costs for that matter. One other thing, in the past, in terms of dealing with this separate upgrade charge, is that they were trying to capture, the city was trying to capture not only the capital cost, but the operating costs of the tertiary upgrades that occurred or completed last year. That is very difficult to do in a consistent and rational manner, because there's too many things that are back and forth at that plant that you can't really say, this is just that. It's a combined operation, and as you go forward, when you build this work, what's that going to do to what's existing? It's trying to maintain a distinction that we didn't think was reasonable as going forward. But we have an alternative. We know this, that was a controversial item that would be, you know, proposing that would be controversial, and so we have an alternative that I'll describe in a few minutes. We are recommending that future increases, like the other, be done based on the CPI. And the methodology that we use, we're actually looking at reducing the rates, as I mentioned earlier, the project costs for the upgrade came a little lower than we counted on. And so we recognize that we can reduce the rates, so we did a little more look at this than we did on the other utilities because of that factor. So we look forward to fiscal year 14, 15, to pick up that project that I mentioned for. We assume no customer growth, which is a conservative assumption. I know of the Walmart project coming, you know, when it actually happens, will happen in this fiscal year or later, I don't know. We did keep, we have a debt service now from the upgrade project that is a fixed amount, and when we did our projections forward, we kept that amount fixed, and I'll actually show you that calculation in a minute. Because there was concern happening in the public's part, we had a public meeting that we're somehow double-dipping on that, and we really did factor that out. We have the capital projects I mentioned before, and we included a reserve goal. My understanding, the general fund has a reserve policy. It's not specifically applicable to the utilities, and so we're suggesting that we ought to at least have a target that we look at. And based on my review, I mean, you have a goal of $0.7 million. That's a combination of operating and capital reserves, and, in a minute, we're down at the end of that cycle at about $2.2 million, which, and the balance is probably going to rise in the following year because we are showing higher income than expenses, so by a small amount, so that's comfortable, in my opinion. This is a very shrunken version of the analysis that you have in the staff report. I wanted to point out just a couple of things. I'm not going to go through all these numbers unless you have a question about them. But we start off with, you know, actual figures for these various categories of operations and capital. Separate rate revenue from other revenues, so that when you apply a factor for whether it's representing CPI, or in this case, you know, minus 6.5% rate reduction this year, rate revenue. Keep track of CIP versus operations, and I wanted to highlight in operations, in fiscal year 10, 11, this was the cost of operations for the entire utility, just under $2 million. In 11, 12, we now have the debt service from the upgrade project, which is just a little over $1 million a year, so that explains that big jump. But I wanted to point out that when we did the projection to the next year, this, and this is the cost escalation factors we use, the 3.0% CPI that we're applying on the other utilities, and this is not a 3.4% jump, it's only about 2.2%. So it shows you that we did factor out the debt service in doing the increase, so we weren't, we weren't increasing the cost by an inflationary factor on that large fixed cost item. Bottom line is, at the end of this period, we're looking at about a half a million dollars worth of revenue exceeding expenses, so we're out of these negative numbers we have in these two years. Bottom line, fund balances at $2.2 million, and the recommended reserve based on 25% of operating costs and $2 million of your capital reserve is a little greater than that. So we're on the right path. We're not at the target, I mean, right to be at, but it's still reasonable, and again, it's in the right direction. Public meeting. We had a public meeting at the police community room a few weeks ago on January 24. A number of questions, and I started with the one that I actually thought was pretty perceptive. Somebody asked, is the CPI the best index to use for a wastewater utility? And I really had to point out that, well, maybe not. There are literally thousands of indexes that the Bureau, the BLS puts out there. You can get an index for rock salt. So there's others to look at. We could go with a combination of indices for various components of our costs and make it a much more complicated process. I don't know how much time and effort Cal Waste puts into coming up with their rate requests for adjustments, but I know it takes the city a lot more time to review it than if it would be if it was a CPI. There's another index called the Producer Price Index, which is really meant towards companies that produce things. companies that, that produce things. Obviously, it's the name. It does take into account the cost of capital equipment, which is, I thought was interesting. And, and I know some of the components of the waste formula use one of the PPIs. It's, there are, as I said, there's lots of sub indices under these various broad categories, and they use a few of the components. There was one for vehicle repair, for example, another index. So we looked at that, and gosh, it was 5.9% for the last year. So I thought, public probably wouldn't like that one too well, so. I didn't want to point out to the person who commented that we did look at it. So, you know, because we have to go, we can't go more than five years anyway, we are comfortable continuing with the CPI. Somebody asked about the solid waste transfer station project. Yeah, I, I read about it when I was working in Lodi, but I, I didn't get too involved in it. So I don't know what all the issues were, but obviously, they did not find a site in the city. And I just really, it was pretty obvious to me that investment like that, you've only really got three, I think, three or four years left on the franchise agreement. It's really not practical to look at doing a major capital investment unless you were to open up the contract and negotiate a long extension and all that, which you could consider doing, but that's not for tonight. Water meas installation project, was the question about that. And there was, you know, obviously, the council has adopted the phase one budget. We've got money in the budget. It's been delayed with the various turnover issues and public works, and it just hasn't happened. We, we tried to get it started. I anticipate it's in progress in 2012, but we're not there yet. And I do apologize for that. Somebody asked, was the CPI adjustment a tax? And, and the answer is no, it's not. It is applied to the rates, as we talked about, to keep up with ongoing costs. And we do have to maintain that overall cap of not exceeding our, our costs. And that is something we need to do certainly at a, at a five-year cycle. But really, with an analysis like what we did for the wastewater, that could be done more often. And the point, what about the, the comment was that the debt service should not be increased based on the CPI. And we agree with that. And I showed you the example, or well, the actual calculations that we did that shows that we did not do that. However, there, because there's some sentiment now, I think that some of the members of the public really want to see that item on the bill. And we met with some members of, of, of the folks who were really questioning that outside of the public meeting. And we talked about an alternative that would look at just the debt service. And let me, where we did not consider the operating cost, just the debt service. The debt, we know, well, we almost know that it hasn't given us the final numbers, but it's, it's going to be about $1.12 million. Within a few thousand of that, I'm sure. So we could take that fixed amount and, and create, come up with a number that represents how much we would need to collect that $1.12 million a year. Subtract that from the total rate that we've recommended already, and, and keep that as a line item on the bill. It would stay fixed for the life of the loan, which is going up to like 2030. So, well, yeah, it's 2030. So, and at that point, it would go away when the loan's paid off. There's a little recomp in that because in theory, if you get more customers, your revenue who are paying that, your, your will increase. So you'd have a choice at some point of either lowering the fee a little bit, or you could let it build up to a reserve point where you could say, okay, we've got enough on the bank to pay off the rest of the loan payments, we'll stop it early. So you'd have to make a decision at some point as to how to handle that. The amount per residence is about $11. And in terms of our recommendation, we do think that going with the combined rate is simpler in the long run. But the alternative is a workable solution. We have some concerns we wanted to point it out to you so that, you know, if you want to consider it, you, you're aware of these. As I mentioned, it, it's, the thought is it would be a fixed amount, but it wouldn't wind up changing over time. There's going to be some confusion in the future as how you handle other changes and roll it in with that, or not roll it in, or you create a third one if you, a third line item if you do another financing 10, 15 years from now. And it's rarely, the third point here is that, you know, it's based on a concern or somehow we're going to double count it. And we've demonstrated with you, we can, we can factor that out when we do the increase based on a, on a CPI. But, you know, I think members of the public just felt more comfortable it was kept separate. Again, mathematically, we can make it the same. So, you know, but I, we just wanted to point out, there'll be some issues to wrestle with in the future that, that you'll have to do. So with that, we're back at where I started. And I know that in terms of the, the alternative, your, your council packet has a table that has both the, the recommended adjustments and the, the alternate we call it. I should probably look at it myself now that I, so if you make, when you make a decision on, on the resolution, we, you know, specify which of the two you want to, want to go with. So with that, questions, comments?
The alternative is exhibit 4A.
Have we taken comments from the public first before we do anything with this?
I think we'll open the public hearing at this point. So we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment at this time? Do you have any? No speaker, shoot?
Yeah, into the floor.
Okay, last call. City manager, did you have something to say? Then?
Not aware that we received any written protests?
After you close the public hearing.
Then I'm closing the public hearing.
Okay, just for the record, we did receive three written protests.
Do you need to read those? Or, or do we need to read those?
Um, no, we don't need to read them. I just, it's obvious that three protests is not a majority protest. So the council would then be free to move ahead with the rate adjustments as you so desire tonight.
Can I, something there? I, I was looking at the, the alternative for the WTP, and I, I would suggest we stick with the alternative. Shows more transparency to the public.
I would agree.
I think that it would be better informed to keep that after line. That's just my comment, my, my suggestion to council.
Any other comments? I hear Councilman Cruz in supporting.
Absolutely.
Jason has any?
I think the, like, Richard mentioned, staff is okay with the alternate. We think it's a reasonable alternative. Express some of the concerns, but they're not major concerns. So certainly, council's free to adopt that alternative. That's why we presented in this manner, actually as a, a separate exhibit or exhibit 4A on there, makes it easy, the council wants to go in that direction.
Okay.
I have a comment. I don't know if you were making this just a statement, or would you kind of made it into a motion?
Well, I was waiting to see if we had anything to discuss, but I would like to make that a motion if I could just.
Okay, can we repeat the motion, please?
To, council to approve the, the upgrade, the alternative, as mentioned in the agenda item.
Would be to adopt the resolution, approving all the rate adjustments with the wastewater treatment plant, having the 4A, which is the alternate rate schedule.
Thank you. Would you get that, please, close? Okay, you've heard the motion. What's the second? Uh, excuse me.
Can I just, a clarification? If you look at the resolution, it references exhibit, all of those exhibits, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 4A. So I don't think it needs to be separate, but is any, is there any change, Richard, to, to the, reference to the exhibits?
It'd probably be the best if we adopted a resolution to include exhibits 1, 2, 3, and 4A.
So strike 4?
Right.
1, 2, 3, and 4A.
Thank you. So I guess the motion would be to adopt the resolution as, as just amended.
Are you okay with that?
You wish to amend that?
Yes. Okay. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other dissent or questions? If not, I'll call for the votes.
Vice Mayor Powers? Hi. Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Shatton?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Move on to the regular.
Next item, under the regular count, number one, strategic end, by Mayor Payne.
Since the last council meeting, the, the city council met and reviewed their, their goals and decided to try to combine, instead of having five goals, we combined three so that we could focus a little more clearly and easel, easier for the staff to focus on. These are online. I'm not going to go over them all tonight. I will mention that one of the three-year goals, enhance economic development, we have coming up February 21st as the completion date to ensure completion of environmental and infrastructures to prepare the Simmerhorn commercial property for development. Also coming up soon, which we will be reviewing next month, is to conduct a feasibility study to determine the viability of an entertainment complex in Old Town and present the results to the city council. The other goal that we kept was improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. In March, we will have from the finance director to develop and distribute an RFP for a comprehensive fee study with the cost of the consultant to be included in the 2012, 13 budget. Along with that, we will also identify and recommend the city council for action, new fees if any to be charged by the city. The other goal, the third goal, was to engage the community and provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. Beginning February 5th, 2012, public works director and special projects administrators open to the general public the artificial turf field at Walker Park on Sundays. And I believe we have done that publicly. City manager? Okay. Also coming up, there will be a state of the city address to be made to the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, we will move on, and we will report that to the public and to the council monthly on all of our goals and our moving along with them. If there's no questions, we'll move to the next item.
Next item, under city attorney's office, an ordinance amending chapter 3.32 of the Galt Municipal Code to eliminate a credit against the payment of taxes payable to the redevelopment agency.
Good evening again, Mayor. Councilmembers, until January 24th, there was a provision in the municipal code under the sales and use tax provisions that provided a credit against taxes due and payable to the redevelopment agency. In anticipation of the elimination of the redevelopment agency, the city council eliminated that provision of the Galt Municipal Code by an urgency ordinance on January 24th. I think that it's always good practice as time passes, after the council has adopted an urgency ordinance, to come back and adopt the same provision by way of a regular, by way of the regular process. So that's what is before you this evening. It would be to introduce an ordinance, amend chapter 3.32 of the Galt Municipal Code to eliminate a credit against payment of taxes to development agency and repealing ordinance number 8911. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting of the city council. So as the recommended action, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions? You've heard the recommendation?
We will accept recommendations to staff.
Second?
We have first and second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Shatton?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item. A resolution approving the purchase and sale agreements with multiple owners for the acquisition of nine parcels in the Galt Old Town area and authorizing the city manager to execute and implement the agreement.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present this report to you this evening. This has been a project we've been working on for many months. We got delayed last summer when the Supreme Court issued a stay on all redevelopment activities. The issue was decided earlier this year. And as, as part of that, the city has now become successor agency to the redevelopment agency. And under, as a successor agency, we're allowed to proceed with previous projects authorized by the redevelopment agency, including proceeding with projects associated with previously issued bond proceeds. We have identified for you this evening, nine properties the city, or the city wishes to purchase as part of the Old Town revitalization project that we've been working on for, for several years down in the Old Town. This will continue the city's efforts in hopes of attracting additional entertainment, retail, restaurant opportunities for that part of our community. The total cost of the identified projects is approximately $1.2 million. As part of being a successor agency, there is a new requirement that all activities or all actions taken by the successor agency requires an oversight committee approval. Oversight committee has not yet been formed. We anticipate it being formed within the next month or so. We'll probably be coming back to the council. There's two appointments that need to be made by the mayor, which will likely happen at the next meeting. We've been in touch with other taxi entities, and they also are moving forward with, with their appointment. So hopefully in March, we'll be ready to, to move forward. So the agreements are written, is it does require the approval committee, so the properties will not close until such time as the oversight review and approve those. The oversight committee does not approve them, then the, the city would not be allowed to proceed with the purchase of those properties. Again, the funding for the purchase comes from bond proceeds that were issued last year. This was one of the original intents of those bond, bond proceeds. And with that, happy to answer any council questions. The recommendation in front of you this evening is that council, as the successor agency, to the Galt Redevelopment Agency adopt the resolution approving the purchase and sale agreements with multiple owners for the acquisition of nine parcels in Galt Old Town area and authorizing city manager to execute and implement the agreements subject to approval of the oversight committee.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the city council members? I have one. Is the oversight committee the last to review?
It doesn't require any other authorization or approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, you've heard the recommendation. Is there, is there no other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion we approve. I have it stated in the agenda. Second?
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item, rental of Chabola and Littleton Community Centers to resident nonprofit organizations.
Okay, the last council meeting, council directed staff to return with, with the resolution that would allow local nonprofits to rent the Littleton and Chabola centers at no cost. That is what we have returned to you this evening to present. One of the other recommendations was that it would be a one-year trial period with the requirement that the groups pay $150 a cleaning deposit. They would, didn't leave the, the facility in good shape, then we would be able to keep that and use that for cleaning. Staff did a little research to give the council some additional information about how many times nonprofit groups rented the facility over the last, in 2011. 16 times in 2011, Littleton Center was rented to local nonprofit groups. Total revenue the city received was $5,890. We did not allow the rental of Chabola Center previously, so that's why there's no rental income from that facility. In addition, it was rented out six times to private, private parties for a total of $3,790. One of staff's concerns is that if nonprofits use the facilities more than they are now, then that might squeeze out some of the private parties, in which case we would lose additional revenue. It's unclear exactly how much revenue loss we anticipate. Up, up to about $8,000 is the revenue loss for a given year. We do have some additional recommendations for the- Uh, we do have some additional recommendations for the council's consideration this evening, um, once staff has had the opportunity to review this. Uh, if there is additional use of the facilities, that would be additional wear and tear on our equipment, our chairs, our tables, other things that would, would be required to be replaced sooner. In addition, it requires right now, staff is involved in setting up the tables and chairs, taking down the tables and chairs, mopping the floor, taking up the, and there's significant costs involved in that. In addition, there's the, the heat line and power costs associated with that. So in order to minimize, since we're not getting any revenue in, in order to minimize the city's costs, staff recommends that we put some requirements on the nonprofits, that they perform some of their own setup, take down, clean up afterwards, um, and that way we would have minimal impact. And if a group didn't do that, then we would be able to retain that. And I would suggest if, if a group does that more than once, then we would have the ability to not let to them in the future at zero dollars. Um, in addition, we would recommend that we limit the number of times any one group can rent the facility at zero, zero dollars for any given year. Right now, if you don't put any restrictions on it, it, it's conceivable that a group could rent it every day of the week.
Right.
Every Wednesday night, every Sunday afternoon. Um, a church group could set up, you know, and have their church, their church meetings there every Sunday.
Right.
Um, and that would limit certainly access to other groups and, and it would certainly speed up the wear and tear on our facilities. And so we would recommend, um, putting a maximum cap, the, um, two times a year. And the council certainly can debate and discuss how many times, but we would, we would recommend having a maximum number of times per year per group. Um, and the resolution that's in front of you right now includes the, uh, everything that I've stated, which is zero dollar rent for local nonprofit groups, a hundred and fifty dollar cleaning deposit. It all includes the language that would require groups to take down, clean up. It does not in here right now have, um, any language about limiting the number of times a group wants to use it. So once you have that discussion and decide, then I will suggest appropriate language to put in here if the council wants to go in that direction.
Okay.
The city attorney is here.
And I think that one other, uh, potential amendment to the resolution is in the staff report, there's a definition of resident nonprofit organization. That term is used in the resolution, so it'd be my, uh, recommendation that you to look at that definition and if you're comfortable with it, that we add that definition into the resolution.
Would you mind reading that definition please?
Sure. A definition of a resident nonprofit organization, this, that follows. Organizations located within the city of Galt and organized primarily for charitable, religious, educational, athletic, veteran, patriotic welfare, civic betterment, or similar per such organizations shall have a principal meeting place within the city of Galt and shall have been organized and established for a minimum of one year, continuously preceding the filing of a rental request, and shall have a bona fide membership of at least twenty Galt residents over the age of eighteen years. Now, the reason we came up with that definition is we did not want to utilize just five oh one C three designation because that's, that's very technical. And so we wanted to have it, uh, to a broader group of organizations, but we wanted those organizations to be legitimate, which is why, uh, we added, uh, as a proposal to the definition that they, uh, be organizations from Galt, they have a meeting place within Galt, they've been in place for, uh, for a year, and that they have, uh, have, uh, twenty, twenty members. So any of that is certainly could be changed at your discretion, but that's the proposed definition we came up with.
Okay. Uh, we've asked the staff to, um, bring forward their recommendations. You've heard them, you've heard some, um, suggestions, so I would now turn to the council for your questions or thoughts. Councilman Cruz?
Quick question. You're saying within the city of Galt, correct? Except we have one high school just outside the city limits. How would they be affected?
Uh, they, they would not, uh, they would not be covered if, if you use this definition, so.
High schools covered under a use agreement. We have a-
Okay, so we have someone covering them?
Yeah.
That would be important.
Yeah. We have a, a facility use agreement with both school districts that allow us to use their facilities, them to use our facilities at no cost. That's always been covered.
Well, additional, I think we should increase from two to three per, per group, per annual, per year.
And I was gonna recommend the same rate.
What did you tap? I didn't hear you. There was a little bit of buzzing going on out there. What'd you say?
A maximum, sort of two maxed out at three per group, per year.
I think that's too much. I was only thinking of one if we're only given. And I don't, and the only reason is we're doing it upon a one-year trial period and they have to give a six-month notice, so, you know, I, I wouldn't want the same group coming in for two. I think that is too much personally. And the other thing I have an issue with is, um, I don't, you know, I don't like the, um, twenty, you have to have twenty in your organization, 'cause some of the organizations are smaller. So.
And I would agree with her on that also.
What was the number?
Yeah, number, yeah, when there's twenty, um, I, I don't know why we have to have a requirement of twenty.
Uh, yeah, I don't think we have to have that in, you know, um, I think knowing that they're, uh, organized and established, there's, there's a lot that comes with being a nonprofit. You've got to have a board of directors, you have to have, uh, own corporation.
Right.
You have to have a lot of things, so I think to say they have to have twenty members.
I think that's a bit too, too high if we have to have a number in there, I really do.
I don't think we need a number in there.
No, I, I don't, I agree.
Councilmember Singleton, would you like to make a comment?
I'm just agreeing with her.
Now.
I'm going along with the discussion, I'm agreeing with her. And, and to Mr. Cruz, uh, I agree, uh, where, she's not gonna agree with me, but I do think that three would be enough. Now, the, the other thing that goes along with that is if we have two nonprofit agencies bid for the same day on that, uh, are we gonna go by filing date, who files first, is that person who gets-
First come, first served.
Okay, okay. 'Cause, you know, that could happen. And then we can review that in a year and see, uh, how we've done with the, the nonprofits and, and if we've had any issues we need to iron out. Uh, but, I mean, I, I don't know why we'd have a problem with, uh, three times a year, I would, uh.
Well, if I understand your numbers correctly, there were only sixteen times during the previous year it was used, correct?
That's when it wasn't, I mean, that's when we charged them, so.
Right.
If you don't charge, you may have more.
I think you'll have a lot more, and I, that's why I think that, I almost thought two was too much, to start off with three, one big empty here, your organization, you know, it is gonna be a lot on parks and rec, and, and we have, we're giving it an initial, but three times, no, not in my book. I mean, that's just the way I feel. Three times is, uh, a lot. Councilmember Singleton, you have a comment?
I'm good, I'm good with no more than two. You know, but I have a question.
Okay.
You came up about, uh, for someone to reserve one of the, uh, centers, six months in it, or maximum of six months out.
Yeah, that was one of the recommendations. Right now, you can reserve one of our facilities up to a year in advance.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so what the recommendations was, if you want it for free, then you can't reserve it a full year in advance, you can only do it six months in advance. That way, you're not taking the space of somebody else that's paying and wants to do it further in advance. So you wouldn't have maybe the prime dates. If you get it for free, you're flexible. And so that was the thought process.
All right, sure.
And I, I also like the part of, uh, the organizations need to do some of the work because they're getting the hall of setting up the tables up. And sometimes we don't think as far as staff does, and I really, um, like that part about setting up the tables and cleaning the place when you're done and.
That was my intent when I brought that up about the cleaning deposit.
Yeah.
Those organizations would do the setup and they would sweep and clean and mop long as we have that, you know, the, everything there for them.
Yeah, right. We'd probably have a checklist.
Yep.
Given to them, saying, here's what you have to do, and here's where everything's wanted to be.
Maybe have it posted?
Yeah, we'll have it posted and as part of the rental, we'll give a copy of them in advance and we'll probably, the little janitor's closet, we'll have it on the inside of the door so they can go through the checklist, things they have to do.
Fair enough.
I have a question too. Um, and this will only be available around the, um, athletic schedule, right? Because I know we have basketball in both facilities and they will-
The problem is that our programs would have preference, so if there's a City Tots preschool event, or a basketball program, or the seniors have something going on, that they, we would mark those out on the calendar in advance, so they couldn't book over those. But any other dates that weren't being used by our program, then they could fill those in.
Okay.
Do we know how many, there are how many?
Oh, quite a few.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if then if we're gonna let some organizations do two and there's not that many spaces left.
True.
You know, so there are quite a few.
Yeah.
More questions?
Follow-up to what Jason said.
Okay.
What are the months that, uh, bat, like basketball's over, that's the big one, I think, but.
Yeah.
Does it start like about March to like September is? We don't have a big fund.
Basketball is, um, like November to March, I think.
Yeah, okay, sometime in March.
Yeah, yeah, that's when that ends.
Somewhere in March.
And the senior programs go year-round and the, uh, City Tots program goes from September through, you know, the end of May. Um, but they're not used in the evening a lot, so if a group wanted to have a fundraiser or a dinner at night, we don't use that, the facilities as much in the evening, so those, you know, most, most of the days are pretty booked. Evenings are not so much unless there's some special things going on.
Uh, I'm gonna allow someone from the audience to come up and make a comment to, Carrie.
I didn't realize, probably highly unusual and not appropriate, I didn't realize this was voted on last month. My bosses, Monica and Armando came over and asked me, without the kitchen being used this, but I was just sort of in my kitchen, I didn't want it hot. Um, something they weren't aware of, and I sent down to my little coordinator, I have a huge, um, re-therm oven. I'm gonna get it by the eight thousand dollars. Got a dairy fruit plug, it is unsealed, but it's hard to heavy for me to move. Every event that's a kitchen issue in Chabola, that has to be moved out if it's a city's not responsible for it, nor parking rec. And actually, maintenance has to move it out, move it into the locker room, and move it back before nine o'clock every morning. And I don't know that that was even brought up for, um, allowing the kitchen to be used when they voted last month. They didn't want that to be put out there.
You can't put a sign on it, or it can't be on our, um-
If the little unit isn't willing to take the chance, we do have the ovens and they can use the ovens, but with the re-therm oven, it's very expensive and it's very heavy. It's kind of weird aside, I don't even have, I wouldn't even attempt to unplug it because I can't have it for, the oven, that standard, uh, kitchen, kitchen, kitchen ovens, who's in, that's in there, isn't appropriate enough for even large, have to me cook my two meals. I have actual two ovens, uh, a griddle and then four burners. But the two ovens themselves aren't, and I put in eight to nine trays of meals, now we have four racks. Um, they don't, they say they want, they're aware of that and sure that you guys, it's not in the kitchen, we're in a weather blizzard. And Mondo and Monica were, were at that.
And what did you call it? I didn't.
It's re-therm.
Re-therm, okay.
It repeats the meal for me, but I just thought you guys ought to know that for the actual kitchen portion, 'cause I usually lock it, it stays locked, but if that's used, that is an actual additional maintenance issue. It is right now, they only come in three days, we feed them off the floors in Chabola Center, and they put up four basketballs today early because that's what they're supposed to. Uh, if they're not there every day with the kitchen staff, so it is additional maintenance cost for the city.
We can re-talk the meals on wheels about it because, uh, I, I just think that we can talk to them if something can be arranged. We could, I know it's an expensive piece of equipment, but there's something that can be done, I don't think it has to be moved all the time.
Try to figure out racks or something without, to get it locked.
We can talk.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we need to talk.
We'll take a look at that.
Thanks, Carrie Ann.
The other thing is, we're not opening up the Chabola Center to every group for private parties, we're gonna restrict it to local nonprofits. And our, our preference is, is to put people in Littleton if they do want the kitchen, people to use the Chabola, if that's their preference. But, you know, if we limit the number to a couple times, whatever, do you decide on two or three times, and then, uh, we, we direct as many as we can over to Littleton, I think the use at Chabola for their kitchen will be pretty limited.
Any other discussions?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. No? You wanna hear it now? Uh, this with, this up, you know, for, for kitchens there, to push them all the time into Littleton, it, it isn't exactly right because of the logistics of how big Littleton is. Sometimes people want a smaller, um, so I hope that-
We're not gonna push them, we'll just make sure they know that both are available to them.
Okay.
And, uh, if they want to be in Chabola, they'll be able to.
Okay, you gotta play nice.
We'll play nice, no problem.
And that, and means that she, she's looking only one at three. I'm willing to build what you recommended two times, I'll go back down to compromise a few times. Um, but other than that, I, I have no other objections.
What about the twenty?
Except for that.
You do accept the twenty?
No, I, I do not accept the twenty on that.
Is there any number that-
Look on that.
That you want to put on there or not?
I don't know.
We can take that.
Do you want to drop that out?
We can eliminate that and, and go ahead and stick with the recommended two times per, uh, uh, year for, uh, nonprofit, then, then I could, I could go with that. But i- as it stands now with a, a number, I, I can't, I can't go with that. I would have to come back.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before I ask on this? Is anyone prepared to, uh, make a motion? I will. With all their changes? There's only one change actually, 'cause we're gonna keep the two when we're doing the six months, so the only thing that we'd wanna have eliminated is the sentence, shall have a bona fide membership of at least twenty Galt residents over the age of eighteen years. We can just stop with filing of a rental request.
And that, I would be included in the resolution.
But I think we need to make sure we keep-
As a definition of a nonprofit.
Right. We need to keep the, uh, over eighteen years person responsible.
Oh, you're correct. Right, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe we need to, uh, read the motion.
Yeah.
As, for, yeah.
We kinda, kinda cut it up a little bit, yeah.
What I got with, um, your adopting the resolution as amended, delete requirement and adding the local nonprofit definition.
Team- Limiting the number of free rentals to any one organization to two times per year.
Max.
Not, not two times per year.
Two times.
Over eighteen years of age.
That's part of it.
Yeah, part of it.
Why, you hear her mention that when she read it back.
Mayor, I think.
I don't know, um, council, I don't know if I understand the eighteen. Um, the way it was originally in there is it said to have a bona fide membership of twenty residents over the age of eighteen, so if you eliminate the number of members, I don't, I'm not sure that I understand where the age of eighteen limitation would, uh-
What I'm looking at is somebody's gonna be responsible for that center, if we're gonna have them sign a paper, right? They would have to be somebody over eight, of eighteen years, page, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's already included actually in our other policies, but.
Okay.
I think we're covered.
That's why I wanted to make sure it was in there. I mean, that, that's the only reason I wanted to.
Okay. Oh, wait, got another comment here. Go ahead.
I just asked if we had a motion. Did we have a motion?
You did, yeah.
Now, I hope so.
You did. You want red pen?
No.
No.
I'm prepared to do the second.
I'm prepared to do the second.
(laughing).
I'm gonna make a motion.
(laughing).
What was the other?
I think we're ready.
Have, have, have you made a motion?
I made the motion.
She was making the motions, uh...
And we, and we clarified the eighteen, taking that out along with, so we have a first and a second. Is there any more question, comment? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Now we get down to the serious part.
Vice Department Fiscal Year 2012 Second Quarter Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community members. This evening, I want to present a second quarter update for the fiscal year 2012, and the focus will continue to be on the General Fund and Cultural Recreation Fund, but I will point out some, um, major variances in some of the other funds. In the General Fund, our revenues are just over two point four million dollars as compared to the budget estimate of seven point five, so we're approximately thirty-two percent of the budget. Some of the major categories consist of property taxes, and that makes up forty-seven percent of the General Fund. We received only one advance in the month of December, and based on that advance, we estimate that our property taxes will actually come in at budget. We have estimated that revenues from the property taxes will be equal to the amounts that we received in the last fiscal year, so we do expect that they will flatten out. We've received information on assessed values from the County Assessor's Office, and it looks like countywide that values have gone down about three percent are estimated. We're, but based on that advance, I think that we're gonna come in right at budget, so we're, um, hoping that that estimate still holds true. Other taxes are self-tax activity, there is positive growth there. We actually increased seven percent as compared to the same quarter a year ago, and, um, um, sixteen percent quarter to quarter, and the increase primarily related to fuel prices, but we have had some businesses that we have a larger period than this, so that was definitely positive news for the city as well. In the first two quarters, we saw an increase of self-tax over budget of fifty thousand dollars, so we will be recommending a budget, budget adjustment. We hope that over the next two quarters, that we'll see additional increases, but at this point, we do expect that at least fifty thousand dollars over the budget will be realized. Um, in the intergovernmental, one of the things that we have seen already is, we had a portion of our motor V is now in property taxes, is motor V in lieu of property taxes, and that now is shown under property taxes, but there is a component under my vehicle that based on SB eighty-nine, it was redirected to public safety, and so we still maintain that hundred thousand dollars for our Fund Seventy, so that has been shifted away, so we will be making adjustment. That was about sixty thousand dollars in the General Fund that we will not be receiving in the current fiscal year. On the expenditure side, we're approximately forty-seven percent of budget, so that's definitely good news. We're under, we should be about fifty, less than fifty percent, so definitely good news. Two areas that I did want to bring to your attention, one of them was group insurance. We did, um, not include the budget estimate for one of, um, for one employee in one department, so our expenditures are a little higher there. We will be including an adjustment during the midterm budget process. Additionally, in our engineering department, we are over on budget. We had a, um, a payout calculation to an employee, so they are over on the budget, so we'll be addressing that during the midterm. Other than that, all the other items, um, areas actually look like they're within the annualized budget amount, so nothing that looks out of the ordinary. In the Culture Recreation Fund, collections are right on, we're at fifty percent of budget, primarily, um, the, the primary area of revenues is the Gulf Market. On the expenditure side, we are just about forty-six percent of the budget, so we're well within our fifty percent. Um, the area that I did want to bring to your attention was Recreation Department. They are slightly over on the expenditure side, and that's primarily due to unemployment costs. We had some employees that are part-time employees, and when they're no longer working, they can follow for unemployment costs, so that is a little bit higher, and we will be looking at that and monitoring that over the next two quarters. Um, a couple of other funds, our gas tax transfer state, transportation fund, the, the revenues are low. Those, um, amounts that we receive are based on claims that are submitted, and, um, so we have not submitted some of them, or there isn't, so those are low in comparison to budget. Two of the big ones that have to do with transportation is, we have an eight million dollar on Measure N, and we have an eight million dollar on RSTP, so we're waiting for some expenditures and, um, the claims to be submitted in those two funds. Public safety, um, here again, positive news because of sales tax, last quarter increased by two percent, and from a year ago, same quarter, we saw some increase in our sales activity, four percent. The good news is, sales in Measure R is actually trailing at about percent of our sales, the General Fund. We budgeted originally at fifty percent, so it's definitely positive. Two quarters, we saw that, we have an adjustment of thirty-three thousand dollars over budget in the first two quarters, so again, we're hoping that these sales will continue over the next two quarters, and we'll have a positive, or a further positive adjustment by the time we get to the midterm budget process. Um, Measure on the expenditure side, we know that it, it's, um, we have six sworn officers budgeted, includes above one cop's grant spending position, there is one vacancy right now, um, for the sworn officer, and there's also one dispatcher. Additionally, we have that in, last month, council authorized a change in personnel, so we'll be shifting from one sworn officer to an additional dispatcher, but that wasn't reflected as of December, but I did wanna bring that to council's attention. Um, as the, as Rich, our Public Works Director, advised us, we are a little ahead on our utilities, and that's because we do have three cycles in as of December, so that's good news, and the expenditure side are within the, in all of our enterprise funds. And lastly, I wanted to report just on the Redevelopment Agency. We received the first advance, we think that revenues will come in, but on the expenditure side, we are now the successor agency, and, um, so we are continuing to monitor, um, information as we receive it. We will be presenting another EOP, ROPS at the next agenda meeting. We are trying to present information on the bonds, you see, one of the items was presented this evening, so, again, a lot of it is, um, we're kind of reviewing things on a daily basis, so we'll keep you informed as, um, we receive the information. Other than that, I think all the other items are close to annualized amounts, no big surprises that we've seen, that I have not mentioned this evening, so again, we will continue to keep council and the community apprised of the financial condition of the city of Gulf. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address those this evening. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council on this report, other than, well done?
Yes, really easy to read, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And we especially appreciate the increases in the revenues. That was definitely a positive report for this evening. Would you just keep that up, please?
I will do my best.
Okay, I think we're ready to receive the report.
No, it's the original name.
Oh, we don't need to vote on it? Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next item.
Next item, under Finance Department, it's all purchasing policy revisions.
Good evening. This evening, I am recommending that council adopt the resolution accepting the revised procurement procedures and basically superseding our prior actions regarding the contracting authority of the city manager and prior, um, or subordinate personnel department heads. The actual purchasing policy, the last time we did a comprehensive review was back in nineteen ninety-seven, and over the last couple of years, we brought a couple of changes. We made some changes to some contracting authorities, to, um, Public Works Director, we actually did a local ordinance on preferences, um, and we had a bunch of different ordinances, and what we are trying to do this evening is basically bring everything back into one policy. We wanted to address the policy so it's more user-friendly. We also wanted to be sure that we're consistent with the code and the authority actually lies with the city manager as a purchasing officer, and he can delegate to us as department heads, but we really wanted to get back and have the city manager be contracting authority as opposed to us department heads, and then also one of the goals was that we wanted to have one document. We are constantly referring back to a resolution or another ordinance, and we wanted to bring everything here, so hopefully this policy actually addresses all of three of those goals that we're trying to achieve this evening. Some of the major changes that you'll see in the policy include that council has, uh, they retain all of the, um, contracting authority that, um, that, um, unless it's otherwise specified in the policy. So, everything still comes back to the council unless we've actually earmarked it as a city manager authority or department head authority. Um, prior resolutions are now superseded, so they are no longer in existence. We saw some resolutions where we had some department heads that had contracting authority for up to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, or change order authority of seventy-five thousand dollars, so this basically supersedes that, and we've now spelled out what the contracting authority is and those thresholds are for the city manager, department heads, and or council. Um, the city manager's contracting authority has now been established at thirty thousand dollars for contracting except for public projects, and that was increased from twenty thousand dollars in the prior policy. The city manager's contracting authority for public projects is tied to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which we did, um, opt to be a member of, and that currently is a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for informal public projects, that threshold amount, so the city manager now has contracting authority for that as opposed to the department head, the city manager has that. He can delegate, but now he is actually the purchasing officer. Contracting for goods and services above thirty thousand is done pursuant to sealed bids. The amounts between ten thousand and thirty thousand are now pursuant to written quotes, and between two thousand and ten thousand, we can use, um, oral or written quotes. Contracting for professional services such as engineering services above thirty thousand is required to be done by our fee, request for proposal. Between ten thousand and thirty thousand in quotes are required, and between two and ten thousand, oral and or written quotes are required. And, uh, it's ten percent contingency is automatically authorized for all public projects. If, uh, a project comes forward and they want to make a change, we can certainly look at that, and council can have some discretion there, but automatically we'll go with the ten percent. Those are the major changes in the policy. If there's any questions, um, I'd be more than glad to try to address those. An option is basically leaving the policy that we adopted back in nineteen ninety-seven. We know that some of those dollar amounts have now, should be increased, but, um, we are recommending those thresholds be as presented this evening, so if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address it this evening.
Questions? Would you like to read the, I'm sorry, city manager?
I just wanted to thank, uh, the Finance Director and the city attorney who worked very hard on this policy, as well as the, uh, the rest of the staff and making comments, and it was a big effort. We've been working on it for many, many months, and so appreciate and acknowledge their efforts in doing that.
Well, and it sounds like it was the improvement that needed to happen in the policy.
I think all staff are gonna benefit having everything together in one policy. I think it's much easier and clearer to read and follow, so it'll make sure we're, we're doing things properly.
We've also included a section on the definition, so if someone wants to know what the definition of a public project is, they can go straight to the definition section, is it, and what are those thresholds? In the very back, we have a quick reference, so if you just know you wanna buy a good, and you know it's three thousand dollars, you can just go to this little template and say, oh, okay, I need to, uh, written quote, or I need to issue purchase order, so it's kind of a quick reference tool that we hope that will be handy for all departments.
Is that online? Is that information online?
Uh, it will be, once we actually have this.
It will be? Okay. I think the council appreciates the hard work of both city attorney and finance director. So we have a resolution. Would you like to read the resolution again?
Adopt a resolution, or, adopt resolution, adopting the revised procurement procedures and superseding all prior resolutions granting contracting authority to the city manager or subordinate city officials or employees.
Move to accept the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Uh, aye, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you, Steve.
Next item, under the Human Resources Department, changes to city of Gulf personnel manual, job descriptions, and salary schedule relating to part-time and temporary positions.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The report we for you tonight is the result of a close review of the city's staffed of non-full-time positions. In this process, it was determined that there was clarification needed, um, to distinguish positions that are part-time and temporary, so whether the recommendations is a change. We're getting the personnel manual. It would also discover several job titles were being used for positions with similar, similar levels of, um, responsibility and pay, so staff is recommending that we group, um, several of these positions, um, together in a, a couple of job descriptions that are being proposed tonight. The last proposal is for employers assigned to work in designated part-time positions that they have, um, they'll be given, um, the opportunity to earn paid time off, which is known as, as PTO. So if approved tonight, the personnel manual will basically clarify that a part-time position is one that is scheduled on a regular basis, that works at least twenty hours per week, and, um, it will be a position similar to full-time in that it needs to be approved by city council and, um, put in our budget process, so it's accounted for in that way, and, um, we have a recommendation for positions in the market for recreation and free in parks, um, if it is approved tonight, and there may be other positions requested as we go along, you know, maybe in the budget process or somewhere down the road if a department finally had that need. Um, a temporary employee will be clearly defined as someone, um, working in a position that is less than nine hundred and forty hours per year, and will, um, you know, could be based on a seasonal need or a project-driven need, but they will definitely work, uh, less than the nine forty hours, and those individuals would not be eligible for the paid time off. Um, the next component of the project was, um, to amend the job titles, as I mentioned earlier. We had a variety of job titles for our part-time and temporary employees, and we were looking at them closely. They, they were really, um, more entry-level, um, and the job titles we have, some of them we haven't used for years. Other ones, they're very similar, were in, um, responsibility and pay, so we are making the titles and the job descriptions a little more generic. So that would reduce the number of, um, position titles to approximately eighteen, when we started at, um, thirty-three. The final component is providing paid time off for our part-time employees. So again, as I mentioned, the individuals that will be placed in the part-time positions will begin earning the paid time off, so that is that for vacation or sick leave, and there is an accrual, um, schedule that is listed in the report, will be placed in the personnel manual, and if approved, all of the changes, um, recommended tonight will go into effect March twenty-sixth, and any individual that would begin, um, accruing PTO, their first accrual would show up on their April first paycheck. Um, that's how we, you know, on our pay stub, that's when you see if you have vacation, sick leave, so the part-time employees would see how many hours they had accrued, and the accrual is based on the number of hours that they worked in the prior, um, two-week work period. So, um, the last item I wanted to just go over is the salary schedule, in looking at it and trying to make it consistent with our full-time employees. Uh, before, part-time temporary employees were on a different salary, um, matrix, and they only had four steps. We've taken, um, these positions and job titles and placed them in the matrix that we use for full-time employees, so there's a five-step process, and, and they're very, we tried to make the ranges very similar to what the employees are being paid now, but there, there could be some slight increases just because they weren't gonna fit exactly into, um, the new matrix. But according to, um, the departments that are being affected by these changes, the cost is, um, nominal, and it can be absorbed in the current budget, so they don't see that there would be a need for additional appropriation of funds. So, that kind of covers the highlights of the recommendation and the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
I have comments.
I'll read that.
This is something I've been talking with Jason about for a very long time. I'm just so happy about this. I think that everybody that works for our city gets recognition, and when people have been working for us for five years, if you wanna call it as temporary or whatever, I think they should be entitled to some time off, and I'm so happy that you guys did this, and I'm hoping that, uh, when we get more funding down the road, maybe we can look at giving them some other kinds of benefits also. But I'm really pleased with you guys. You did a great job, and I know there's gonna be a lot of happy, um, staff out there, and I, I think it was a great thing.
Yes, I think it's gonna be, um, a really good for our employees, like you said, and I think that Carrie Ann tonight is a perfect example of our committed and dedicated part-time and temporary employees. Unfortunately, we won't be able to offer the PTO for the temporaries that, you know, haven't met that threshold, but, like you said, it's a good start in really recognizing our, um, employees that are committed even, to the city, even though they're not full-time employees.
Okay. Good job.
Good.
Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Singleton?
Why, she can't let me go by without making a comment.
(laughing).
Uh, I, I gotta agree with, uh, Councilman Powers. Well, that's right, I just, I thought he had something he wanted to add. What a great job, and you, Paula, thank you so much for instilling us into, uh, our, uh, program, our temporary. I, I just wanted to make it clear to the public, uh, when you say that we are, uh, our, uh, total part-time and temporary job, it's just titles are going down from thirty-three to eighteen. We are not getting rid of those positions, correct? So we are not laying anybody off. I just wonder if the public understands that we are not laying people off.
Through this program, no. There would be, um, of course, temporaries that reach the threshold of the nine forty, they do sometimes leave during the fiscal year and possibly come back, but no, um, and this will, really, if anybody's salary is affected, it will be, um, again, a slight increase, and no, it will, um, really have an effect that's a reduction in pay.
Okay.
And I do, um, Richard Prima did bring up a, a suggestion about the clerical public works that we didn't address, so I, that's not in the staff report tonight. Did you wanna, should I make a change to that, or I don't mean to put you on that, but...
I think we just, we'll just address that separately.
Okay. So I think needless to say, we are going to, um, you know, probably through the budget process, there may be a couple of other, um, suggested part-time positions because the departments recognize a need for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Councilman Cruz, Shelton?
I just had one question. If we make the motion here, city, uh, attorney, we have three parts to it, do we just make one motion for all three?
Um, it seems like there's a consensus, so I think we're fine doing a one motion on all three resolutions. So there are three resolutions before you. Adopt a resolution approving the changes to the Gulf Personnel Manual, adopt a resolution approving job descriptions for the positions of Parks Worker One, Two, Recreation Worker One, Two, and Project Management Specialist, and adopt a resolution approving the salary schedule for part-time and temporary employees.
I still move.
Okay, we have a question and a second.
A second.
We have two seconds. Roll call vote, please.
All right, I didn't hear you.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, uh, motion is passed unanimously with our strength.
Next item, please.
Public Works Department Award of Wastewater Treatment Plant Facilities Master Plan, Master Task Order Agreement to West Fields Associates.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an overdue project. Um, the, the city issued requests for proposals, uh, in two thousand and ten to, uh, three engineering firms who have worked for the city on various waterway, wastewater capacities in the last few years, to do the, the, really the long-range facilities plan for the wastewater treatment plant, and, uh, it's, has a couple of purposes, uh, for, and just looking at long range in accordance with the new general plan, and what it's gonna take to, um, facility, uh, in the future, so we can actually do our impact fees, um, which is an important element we need to do. Um, but perhaps more importantly is the, there's a short-term aspect to it as well. I mentioned a few minutes ago in our presentation on rates, that we're under this time schedule order, and we have to make modifications to the secondary plant to, to meet the requirements. It's nothing to do with the tertiary, this is now the, the old secondary plant, and, as I mentioned, that's gonna be in the ballpark of a six-million-dollar project, and we wanna make sure that what we do there is, is compatible with what the long-range plan's gonna be. That's the whole point of having a long-range plan. Um, it's unfortunate we didn't have a longer, a long-range plan years ago, but that's... It's unfortunate we didn't have a longer, a long-range plan years ago, but that's okay, here we are now. So we issued that request for proposals and for some reason it didn't get acted on. It was one of the things that we needed to move on very quickly when I arrived a few months ago. And unfortunately, fairly quickly means three months, but here we are. Staff reviewed the proposals we received. Because of the time lag and knowing more things about what we know now or what we didn't, the RFP was issued overall. We wound up looking at this from a, who's best qualified to do the work? And let's work with them to modify the scope of work to really meet what we need to do now. So we didn't get into a lot of discussion about what each proposal said because what we asked for then is a bit different than what we need to do now. So that's why the staff report doesn't really cover all that background. The team recommends associates be selected to do this work. The tasks identified as to what needs to be done to really do the issues I just described to you. We also asked for a couple of other things that we need to consider. And I would direct it to the staff report on some of the optional items that we are not recommending at this point, but we may want to consider, which is why we are asking for a task order agreement so that we can come back without having to redo the whole process and having a new agreement, but issue another task to do some of these items should we so select. The actual, the impact fees, this is something that is typically done with an engineering firm in conjunction with a financial firm. They did give us a quote for that, worth twenty-eight thousand dollars. We're suggesting we wait on that, but I wanted to, you know, point it out to you that you may see that in the near future. Another task is the operations and maintenance manual for the overall plant. And it's something I am surprised we don't have more of that already in place, but it really needs to be done. I mean, obviously, they have some of their own procedures in place, but to really have a comprehensive manual that's done under today's standards, something we don't have. We asked for that. It was actually more money, I thought it, we wanted to spend on it, quite frankly. So we want to look at that a little harder, but you may see that come back in the near future. Some other optional tasks, particularly the one that I wanted to point out is to actually get started on design documents for the near-term improvements to meet the permit. I really think we're going to wind up having to do that before we actually finish the facilities plan in order to meet the schedule that's in our permit. So I wanted to give you a heads up that that's, you know, probably going to come back to you. The rest of the items that are in the scope of work, I'm not going to go through them because they're all those technical things. But I will talk to one of them, the last task, number I, which is to administer the EPA grants. There will be used, well, at least one of the EPA grants that will be used towards this effort. We received the near mark two thousand and nine, I think it was. And that has like a fifty percent match requirement. And the EPA takes a percentage of it off the top. So it's, the grant is not enough to do the entire project. But if we add the second grant to it, we have more money to what we need for this. So we're looking at having West Hills help us administer the grants so we can maximize their use. We may come back with a different project for the second grant. Or we may want to roll into this if we add the design work, we don't know yet. But one of the things I've been concerned about is because of the turnover in staff that we've had, which is going to continue as we find permanent replacements over the next six, eight months, that we'll have another set of, you know, new people involved. And that's when things fall through the cracks. And so you don't want to mess up your grant administration. So we've asked them, maybe they take that on as well. So that's what I, it was not in the original, original scope of work that I've mentioned. Reverend Skiles can do a fine job. They did an excellent job on the tertiary facility. Looking at the amount of that project, it was, what, sixteen million dollars? And we had a hundred thousand dollars in change orders. And that's, that's, that's an excellent track record that you want to continue with. So that's our staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? Okay. Can we take these in two, in one? Can we adopt in one or does it need to be taken individually?
No, you can do it in one motion.
It's a bit of a read it, please.
It's actually, I mean, there's separate recommendations, but it's actually all folded into one resolution. So I'd recommend that the action be to adopt the resolution authorizing city managers execute a master task order agreement with West Hills for wastewater treatment plant facilities. And further put task order number one in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, zero, nineteen dollars. And further authorize special appropriation of three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from wastewater fund zero to the wastewater treatment plant facilities, plant project CIP fifty-C. And the account number's in the resolution.
And we accept the recommendation?
We have a motion, here's our second.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Have a first and a second. Are there any questions or concerns? Well, I have to ask one. Fine, what does that do to our budget? I'm sorry.
That's a lot of money.
Smile again.
There are funds, there is a transfer form in here that we will do a temporary internal transfer of the amount of, I believe it was a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. There is insufficient amounts in the capital fund. So there are funds in the wastewater operating fund, so there is a temporary. Looking at some other sources during the budget process. So we feel confident this amount will be repaid in a very short time period. But again, we just wanted to have that cash flow, so I think we're fine.
Thank you very much. Okay, we...
If I may, I'm sorry, there is two things I mentioned that I should have, should have mentioned. One was, we are also going to look at how much of this project we could fund from impact fees. The original budget allocation for this project was about fifty-fifty. I think it could be much higher, but that needs, it needs a little bit of work to do it. I didn't want to wait on everything else just to do that. So that will help in the long run. I also wanted to introduce Jeff Bells from West Hills, in case you haven't met him before.
Welcome.
He'll be the project manager of the project. You have a face now to go with it.
Do you have any comments that you'd want to make or...
We're pleased to be working with the city again, or continue working with the city and some of the joint public work.
All right, thank you. Well, we do have a motion and I would call for the vote. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
And motion is passed unanimously. Next item, please. Communications. I don't have any. Does anybody have any communications, any written communications they want to share with the rest of us? If not, you're...
You mean like council members or staff?
Or staff, that's why.
I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're at the right area where someone bring up something that one of our citizens had brought to us earlier today.
Okay, I think you'll, you'll be able to bring that up under your comments.
Yeah, my comments.
Okay. Then Steve Clark's report.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to the city manager, he can tell you a little more about the topic. As you know, the city has been working very closely with the Chamber of Commerce on a number of economic development efforts, the Shop Local Group and a number of other things. We've worked closely on with them. One of the things we've discussed recently is forming an economic development task force. Chamber's moving forward with forming the task force. And they had a board meeting recently and they designated certain members of theirs to participate on this. They also asked if the city would be interested in appointing two council members to participate on that committee. I don't have a whole lot of details as far as how often they would be meeting, but their initial indications, it would be a monthly, monthly meeting. So I asked the council if there was interest in appointing two council members to that committee.
What, excuse me. What's the purpose of it? Just to work together with the...
So for my, again, this is a chamber designated committee. My understanding in talking with chamber members is they are interested in being more active in helping to, helping existing businesses as well as recruiting businesses to come into our community. So it would be a lot of strategies, coming up with plans and taking a look at what we need in order to be more competitive when it comes to economic development and those kinds of things.
If I could just add, it's something that the elected officials in the chamber, when we were working together very closely, I know and can tell you, in two thousand and two and up to about two thousand and six, it was always something that we had talked about doing for some whatever, just different reasons that never did quite get together. So it's been going on for, in talks for a long time. I think it'll be good for the community.
Okay, I would like to volunteer since I'm in the middle of it with Shop Local. And then I would ask if there's anybody else?
I would also like to kind of delve right into Shop Local.
Okay. If the council has no objections?
There is.
We need a motion.
There are motions.
I'll make a motion that the mayor and Councilman Mark Cruz volunteer their time.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton, Councilwoman Singleton. Okay, we have a motion, it's, we have a vote. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
And then I have a few reminders. That motion was passed unanimously. It's your turn.
I was actually about to tell you, we forgot the redevelopment agency, but that was my problem.
Somebody else took care of that.
That was a nice thought.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Just a few reminders, February eighth, there's a Parks and Rec Commission meeting at seven PM here in the council chambers. The Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled for February ninth.
Are you sure that Parks and Rec meeting wasn't changed? You say it's the eighth?
Not that I was notified of that.
You say it's the eighth? Well, we can, we can verify it because I was asked to make a presentation the following week. But we'll get that cleared up. Go ahead.
I will definitely clear that up and check our website. We'll post that tomorrow, first thing. The Planning Commission that was scheduled for February ninth has been canceled. City offices will be closed on Monday, February twentieth in honor of President's Day. And that takes us to our next meeting of February twenty-first here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments by staff? Okay. Comments by city council? And I know Councilwoman Singleton wants to share something. Well, I gotta, I need to think, it's been three weeks, so. Sorry to say that, but it's a while.
Well, let's have to do that, I have to do that all the time. One thing I wanted to bring up, we had a, we had a citizen earlier bringing to our attention that there's some problems out of Gulf, by Griffey and Amberdale Way and West Elk Hills Drive with some BMX bikes and some ATBs and motorcycles in this area and causing dust. Going through trespassing signs, knocking down fences, taking down the trespassing signs. And I don't, our chief was made aware of it, I don't know when, how long ago that was. And they sent us pictures and I would like to, I'm hoping that we can get together with staff and police chief and try to remedy this problem with the trespassers. And I know we've had issues with some of these motorcycles and going through and running from our PD officers using railroad tracks over in the general area. I would ask, I guess I can ask you, off the record about this issue. One thing we have over there is we have a pipe that's in the ground. And this is a hazard, I see, for children in the area. And I'm sure that our city manager and attorney will get a letter to those responsible for that and we'll try to get that taken care of. So the citizens that brought this forth earlier, I'd like to, we will be working diligently on this to try to get this figured out the best we can. And I know our police chief will do the best in his power to do what he can with that.
Does the chief want to make a comment?
We actually received a copy of the email, I think the same time you did. I actually walked the area with the patrol commander today, looking at the problem. We've contacted Elliott Homes to see about putting our fence up. We have to find out in fact whose property it is on the other side of a culvert that runs underneath that road. And we found some more gems being built and that is city property. So we'll be talking to public works to take care of that. We've already contacted the gentleman who was here today, both the time that we responded and also today. And we're planning on meeting with the neighborhood through the neighborhood watch and also contacting the family members as far as parents of some of the kids that were out there and try to address it. One of our biggest problems is this trespass, but we have to get permission from the people who own the property before we can actually take action. But we're actually working on it and hopefully we'll have some kind of resolution shortly.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, I want to ask the rest of the council if we can bring back the staff about the parking for the seniors on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I think that that's really important. And since the solution looks like it's already been made, if we could get CAPS to just block off that area from, what was the time, Carrie? From eight to eleven-thirty, if we could work on that.
Need to look at other options. One of our biggest concerns is taking away market parking. As you know, market is a huge revenue source for the city. And if we don't have money to run our operations, there would be no senior program. And so we certainly don't want to sacrifice one program for another.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying...
So if you block out spots that the market users can't use, then that's, that's the concern. But I'm saying, we've got some other ideas. That was one suggestion. We've got three or four options we can look at. And so we'll come back with the council with some recommendations and some options to address the problem.
It'll come back in two weeks, I think, is what he's saying. And that's what you were asking, and that's what you were asking for too.
Yeah, I just want some kind of solution.
I don't know if it'll come back in, in two weeks. I want to talk to the school district, the fair site, which is right next door. There may be some opportunities there. There's different things we need to look at. But we'll bring it back as soon as we have some options and some recommendations.
Great, great. Okay, was there anything else? Anything happen the last three weeks? I can't remember. Is that it? That's it. Okay, Councilwoman Shelton?
I just want everybody to enjoy the rain while it's here and have a great week.
Councilman Cruz?
Actually, Councilmember Powers took the words out of her mouth. I kind of feel the same way as far as the seniors. And we need to work on it as quickly as we can. If we can work with the school district on their parking lots, that'd be great.
I would just wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, which I thought I dressed appropriately. And...
You did.
If there are no other, if there's no other business, I will return the meeting.
Ten minutes from now. Oh, I can't wait. It's a tough one. Are you... Yeah.